Call the December fourth city council meeting order. Commissioner Smith, we give us the prayer pledge and fact of the day please sir.
Let us pray. I'm once again thankful for this opportunity to be servants of this city. We pray God you continue to lead us, guide us in all that we shall say and do with pleasing and acceptable in your sight. Please bless me as in thy son Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Fact of the day, on December the fifth nineteen forty-five, five US Navy Avengers torpedo bombers comprising Flight Nineteen take off from Fort Lauderdale Naval Air Station in Florida on a routine three-hour training mission. Two hours after the flight began, the leaders squadron, who had been flying in the area for more than six months, reported that his compass and backup compass had failed and that his position was unknown. The other planes experienced similar instrument malfunctions. By this time, several land radar stations finally determined that Flight Nineteen was somewhere north of the Bahamas and east of the Florida coast, and a search and rescue mariner aircraft took off with a thirteen-man crew. The mariner and the naval bombers were never heard from again. The disappearance of the fourteen men of Flight Nineteen and the thirteen men of the mariner led to one of the largest air and sea rescues to that date, and hundreds of ships and aircraft come thousands of square miles of the Atlantic Ocean, the Gulf of Mexico, and the remote locations within the interior of Florida. No trace of the bodies or aircraft was ever found. Thus, seemingly the legend of the Bermuda Triangle, fact of the day.
Okay, approval of minutes. Looking for a motion for the council meeting minutes for November twentieth?
There's no reading of the decorum statement? No? Okay, so, so moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries now. Any changes to the agenda?
No changes.
Okay, presentation of service weapon. Chief. I think, I think your mic, see if your mic's on there, chief.
Is that better? Got a red light on it.
Okay, alright.
There.
There you go.
It's a little too, too personal there. We're here to celebrate Deputy Chief Miller's retirement from the Apopka Police Department. Deputy Chief Miller has profoundly served the Apopka Police Department in our community for over twenty-eight years. His career has been defined by dedication, leadership, and an unwavering commitment to our city of, to the city of Apopka. Throughout his career, Deputy Chief Miller wore many hats. He began as a patrol officer where he laid the foundation for his service by building trust and maintaining safety in our neighborhoods. He then stepped into roles as a community policing officer, school resource officer, which I think is his claim to fame. We run into people all over the community that remember him as his, their SRO. Public information officer, sergeant, lieutenant, captain, and ultimately deputy chief. In each position, Deputy Chief Miller exemplified professionalism and integrity. His contributions went far beyond enforcing the law. He sought to foster strong connections between the department and the community, ensuring that every resident felt valued and protected. Deputy Chief Miller has always prioritized what was best for the department and the citizens of Apopka. Whether mentoring officers, shaping departmental policies, or representing the department in public-facing roles, his leadership and influence have left an indelible mark on our agency and our city. While we are saddened to see him leave, we are equally proud of the new chapter he is embarking on. Deputy Chief Miller will continue his journey as deputy chief at the Orange City Police Department. We are confident he will bring the same dedication, wisdom, and compassion to his new role that he has shown us over the past twenty-eight years. For me personally, it has been an incredible honor to work alongside Deputy Chief Miller over the past nine years. His steadfast support and unwavering dedication have left a lasting impression on me, and his presence will be deeply missed. I am confident that he will thrive in his new role, and I wish him success as he can embark on the next chapter of his life. Deputy Chief Miller's final day with the Apopka Police Department will be December sixth twenty twenty-four. As we bid him farewell, we do so with immense gratitude for his service and excitement for the opportunities that await him. Please join me in congratulating Deputy Chief Jerome Miller on his retirement from the City of Apopka Police Department and wishing him continued success in his next chapter of his career. At this time, we are honored to present Deputy Chief Miller with a service weapon as a token of our appreciation and gratitude for his remarkable twenty-eight years of dedicated service to the citizens of Apopka. One last thing, during the timing of Deputy Chief Miller's retirement, unfortunately, we were unable to plan a retirement celebration before his departure. However, we are currently working on the details for this special event and will share more information in the near future. At that time, we will look forward to celebrating his outstanding career and contributions together. So with that, Deputy Chief Miller.
Mayor, council, listen audience. First of all, I'd just like to say thank you for over the last twenty-eight years of the support that you provided, me and the men and women of the Apopka Police Department. You know, it's with mixed emotions that I stand before you here today. But an opportunity presented itself, and I think I, I just had to bite it and take that opportunity. But just like I told the men and women, staff members yesterday, that we have a lot of talent coming to here. You'll see we're swearing all these new officers and regardless of what the naysayers say, just be encouraged and keep doing what you're doing because there's a lot of opportunities for coming here in the city and within the police department. And hopefully that, you know, we get this building, built here pretty soon so we can hold and house everyone that we have. And again, I'd just like to say thank you, and I want to give a big shout out to the late Joe Brown who brought me here back in nineteen ninety-six. Thank you.
Mayor, just, oh, one thing I wanted to say.
Oh yeah, sure.
And also Deputy Chief Miller, I want to personally say thank you for, if many of you don't know, he actually was my school resource officer at Apopka High School. So I'm not trying to age him, because I am pretty young. But I want to say thank you, I remember in high school where I was kind of shy. And he would always say, "Blackman, hold your head up, you got this." And I appreciate even your mentorship back then. I think that Apopka, we are definitely losing someone that has been great to not only myself, but a lot of people that came before me and after me. And hopefully, we will knock on your door when Chief McKinley calls, when Chief McKinley retire in October and welcome you as our new chief, because I know a lot of people was looking forward to you becoming the chief. And hopefully, when that position opens up, we call you. So we look forward to seeing you back here in Apopka. Thank you.
Well, when I first heard that you were leaving, I felt sad, but then I realized, you know, we can't keep you to ourselves here. And of course, I wish you all the best with this new opportunity. But I really want to say thank you, because when I came here twenty years ago, before I even ran for office, you were one of the, you know, people that really welcomed me and Ed into the city. And you have always made yourself available to me since I took office till this day. So I want to say thank you for your friendship, for just being who you are, a community person. And we do hope to see you come back, but you won't be gone, because I, I know that we've spoken, you said you're always available, and you are always available, so thank you for everything.
Mr. Smith?
Well Deputy Chief Miller, I guess over the past four years, I've tried to, to keep you here. It, it's been evident of the talent that you have, that all the different agents that have sought after you to come to be a part of their agencies, and so that's a compliment to your career here in the City of Apopka. And we want you to know that we appreciate all that you have done, and you've always been available whenever I've called and any of our residents have called, and many of them often refer to you as, as the chief. And they respect you a great deal in this community, and so we wish you well. We're not going to continue to be selfish to try to, to hold you, and I know it's always, you have to do what's best for you and for your family. But we want you to know that we hold you dear here in the City of Apopka.
Mr. Nesta?
Yeah, absolutely, congratulations, and I appreciate the time you have put into the city. I know you've known my family and I for a year or two, going back, I was, I think I was in middle school, elementary school, when, when we've all introduced each other and began to know each other. So appreciate what you've done for our community. I know the root trend deep, you have great historical context of what's going on here, and there will be a void when you're gone. And I just appreciate all you've done, and, and safety and good luck in, in your new endeavor, so thank you.
And I'll follow up, yes, you, you will sorely be missed. It's, it's our loss, but the Orange City's gain, so you know, good luck in your future. I know it'll be bright, as bright as it's been here at Apopka, so thank you for those twenty-eight years here at Apopka. Okay, we've got nine consent agenda items. Anybody need to have any of them pulled, not look for motion?
No, just number seven, which is award a contract for RFP strategic planning.
You want to pull that one?
Yes.
Okay, so look for a motion to approve consent agenda items one through six, eight, and nine.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez. Second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries now. Okay, Blanche, you want to? Or Jacob, okay.
I can speak to this one.
And, and the reason why I'm asking for that is because later on, I guess we're going to be dealing with the city charter. And a lot of the discussion in the city charter was that the City of Apopka had lacked the strategic planning, and that was something that was an ask during the two last years of discussions. So this is the first time that something that we have moved forward to get consulted for strategic planning.
Yeah, and we're excited to move forward with this. So we put out an RFP, I believe it's August, September. We received four submittals. All of them were, were within the, the same price range, within a couple hundred dollars of each other. The one that was rated the highest is the one that is presented to you now is Barry Dunn McNeil and Parker LLC. So you know, the strategic plan, the scope of it includes infrastructure and public services, public safety, sustainability, economic development, community engagement, and empowerment, as well as tourism. So that's, that's the areas that this strategic plan will be covering. One of the reasons why we selected Barry Dunn McNeil and Parker was because of their extensive experience, especially here in Florida, they've worked with a lot of municipalities and counties. So they have experience, they understand the, the political climate, as well as some of the issues that we face here in Florida.
So any questions for Jacob?
Well, I just received the package, so I'll have to review it, because one of the questions that I had asked yesterday was, when is it going to start and what was, you know, what was their plan, how they were going to kind of start going out?
Right, so we'll, we'll, we'll start off with a kickoff meeting, it'll probably be in January, that will do that. And part of the, the initial phase is identifying the stakeholders. And of course, the stakeholders are the community, as well as, I mean, the, the elected officials, the elected representatives of the people will be starting their interview processes, some, some meetings, stakeholder meetings, identifying those, and coming up with some questions. One of the things that they have in their proposal is a community-wide survey to help in the strategic planning process. So that's where we'll begin concurrently, they'll also be gathering da- data from the city, some of our documents, and kind of get a feel of where we're at right now, so they can identify our strengths, weaknesses, and opportunities.
Do, do we have an idea of how long this would take?
They're saying ten months to a year, it's about a ten-month-to-year process. So unfortunately, we won't get this in done, done in time for this next budget cycle, but we will for the next one, for the FY twenty-seven. It'll definitely be a part of that, because the, the last phase of the strategic plan, of course, is the implementation of that strategic plan, and more specifically, you know, dealing with the budget and budget priorities.
I had a couple questions, so pragmatically, and this is something we had brought up, and we discussed this during my agenda review, is that the fire department is already kind of creating their own. They, they've been working on it for a little while now, will this, will they then be updating theirs as well? Will this RFP, that this company be updating theirs as well, or are they kind of, not on their own, but running with what they have, and then we're adapting to what they have?
Yeah, it, it's kind of a combination of the two, yes.
Okay, so massaging that a little bit, okay.
Right.
And then with us not having an economic development director and kind of not, we have an department, but a non-functioning one at this point, how are we going to create a strategic plan for that department?
For economic development, well, we will begin an economic development director sometime here in the near future. Probably when we get to that point where we're starting to go over the specifics under that economic development, we'll, we will have an individual here. If not, I do have experience, and I know that several of you have experience with that, and we have some people in, in our planning department as well that have experience in economic development.
Okay, understood, thank you.
Any other questions for Jacob? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this one?
Leroy Balla-Popek, I just have one question, that you award the RFP to Barry Dunn McNeil and Parker LLC. Is Al, is that group, do that group have any connection to Apopka? The Dunn, is, is not none of the Dunn?
This is from, they're from Maine.
Pardon me?
They're from Maine.
Okay.
Anybody else? Okay, if not, close the public hearing, look for a motion to award a contract for the RFP twenty twenty-four dash A dash one-ten, the Strategic Planning Consulting Services to Barry Dunn McNeil and Parker LLC.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries now. Next up, Poncan Reserve South Platte.
Good afternoon, everyone, my name is Amir Hamza, I'm a planner. The applicant submitted a plat for the Poncan Reserve subdivision located south of West Poncan Road, east of Vic Road, and west of North Rock Springs Road. These are the vicinity and aerial maps of the property. The property has a future land use of residential low suburban and has a zoning of RSF one A residential single-family estate district as shown on these maps. Here are the, here's the Poncan Reserve South Platte, and it consists of a total of fourteen lots. The Development Review Committee recommends approval of the Poncan Reserve South Platte. At its meeting on November twelfth twenty twenty-four, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the Poncan Reserve South Platte. The recommended motion for city council is to approve the Poncan Reserve South Platte.
Alright, any questions for Amir? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? If not, we close the public hearing, look for motion to approve the plat for Poncan Reserve South.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries now. Next up, Hammock at Rock Springs Platte.
Good afternoon, everyone, my name is Amir Hamza, I'm a planner. The applicant has submitted a plat for the Hammock at Rock Springs subdivision, and this is located at west of North Rock Springs Road, south of East Poncan Road, and north of East Lester Road. These are the vicinity and aerial maps of the property. The property has a future land use of residential low suburban and has a zoning of PD planned development as shown on these maps. Here's the Hammock at Rock Springs Platte, which consists of a total of nineteen lots. The Development Review Committee recommends approval of the Hammock at Rock Springs Platte. At its meeting on November twelfth twenty twenty-four, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the Hammock at Rock Springs Platte. The recommended motion for city council is to approve the Hammock at Rock Springs Platte.
Alright, any questions for Amir? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? If not, we close the public hearing, look for motion to approve the plat for the Hammock at Rock Springs.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries now. Next up, utility upsizing agreement, Grassmere Reserve.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioner, my name is Theodore Adudu, Public Service Director, Richard is out this afternoon. This utility upsizing agreement for the Grassmere Reserve subdivision is to compensate the developer for the material costs only for upsizing of the water main from eight inches to sixteen inches, and the reused water main from six inches to twelve inches, consistent with our master plan to accommodate future growth. This agreement is consistent with our code, as well as our established format for such agreement, and staff hereby request the city council to authorize the execution of the upsizing agreement. The total cost of three hundred and twenty-one thousand, six hundred and fourteen dollars and seventy-three cents for the upsizing is in our current water and reused water, wastewater budget.
Alright, any questions for Dio? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this one? If not, we close the public hearing, look for motion to approve the utility upsizing agreement for Grassmere Reserve.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries now. Next up, special event license agreement, Radley Williams.
Radley Williams, Parks Recreation Director, good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Here this afternoon to bring forth a special event license agreement to host the second annual Apopka New Year's Eve Ball Drop at Hurricane Grill again. Last year, Popeye School students from the engineering program worked on and created a ball drop that was put on display and dropped for the new year. We'd like to do that again this year, it was a success last year. Hurricane Grill is interested in hosting this event at their location, and this is the license agreement format that we've brought forth, similar to the Market on Fifth Street event.
Any questions for Radley?
Other than, you know, I did mention yesterday that I'd like to see this event come, kind of go around the city to our different areas, but I was hoping to bring it to the downtown area. And you said that could be probably done in, because this is a two-year.
So we were looking to do it for this year and then next year, and then it is a, it is something that can be set up really wherever we'd like to.
Yeah.
And as we had mentioned at the, in your prep meeting, it is nice to kind of rotate these events to different areas of the city, so because of the success of last year, how well it went, we thought it'd be good to put it there again this year.
Yeah. So I just feel that maybe for twenty-six, twenty-seven, hopefully our downtown will be much more solid and, and bigger, that we can bring that event to the Main Street, Main Street, downtown Apopka.
We can absolutely look towards that.
Okay.
Any, any other questions for Radley? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this one? If not, we close the public, public hearing, look for motion to approve the special event license agreement for the Apopka New Year's Eve Ball Drop.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Radley. Next up, FDOT Michael.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners, my name's Mike Ortiz, Streets Program Supervisor. The FDOT Traffic Signal Maintenance Agreement Amendment Two is the addition of a couple new system and devices, such as the Pro Data Detection System, Automated Vehicle Devices System, and In-Road Running Lights System. Also, there's a couple verbiage changes on the reporting that we submit to FDOT, so that's pretty much what this amendment's about.
Any questions for Michael? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this one?
I just want to say, it is one thing we discussed, it's not really a question, but just part of our agenda review, just stuff that I brought up that, basically that's an agreement, and it was just something that, okay, we have three options here, it's either accept as is, with the updated amendment, agreement, we renegotiate with the cost that's coming in that they're paying us, it was sixty-two thousand, just under, I think?
It's sixty-one, nine hundred and nine dollars.
Right, yeah, so just under sixty-two thousand per year, or we just cancel it altogether, and, and what was recommended by staff was that we renew this and then let them collect data to see, do we need to renegotiate, are we actually making money on this, which I doubt we are? So that's kind of the, the top process on my end, was just to obviously follow what staff recommended. I appreciate you guys going through all that with me and explaining it to me to, to help me understand kind of what the goal was there on the staff's side. And I, I look forward to seeing what that data looks like and where we're at a year from now. Thank you.
Okay, anybody from the public wish to speak on this one? If not, we close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve the FDOT Amendment to the FDOT Traffic Signal Maintenance and Compensation Agreement.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries now. Next up, ordinance number three thousand and seventy-six.
Ordinance number three thousand and seventy-six, an ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the City of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from residential very low suburban to mixed use for certain real property generally located south of West Kelly Park Road and west of Chandler Road, owned by Kelly Park Road Property LLC, comprising forty-five point three seven, three seven acres more or less, providing for severability and for an effective date.
No changes. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this one? If not, we close the public hearing, look for motion to approve, adopt ordinance number three thousand and seventy-six.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson. Second by Commissioner Anderson, all those in favor? All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number three thousand and seventy-seven.
Ordinance number three thousand and seventy-seven. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from residential single-family estate RSF one A to KPI MU, Kelly Park Interchange Mixed Use, with an assignment of transition overlay for certain real property generally located south of West Kelly Park Road and west of Chandler Road. Owned by Kelly Park Road Property LLC, comprising forty-five point three seven acres more or less, providing for severability conflicts and an effective date.
No changes. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? If not, we close the public hearing, look for motion to adopt ordinance number three thousand and seventy-seven. Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez? Second by Commissioner Anderson, all those in favor? All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number three thousand and seventy-two.
Ordinance number three thousand and seventy-two. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, submitting to the electors of Apopka, proposed amendments to the Charter of the City of Apopka. Providing ballot titles, summaries and text for the proposed amendments, providing directions to the city clerk, providing for severability, providing for an effective date for approved amendments, providing for an effective date for the ordinance.
Okay, Drew, are you dialing me in or you?
I believe Cliff is on Zoom for this.
I'm on. Can, can you guys hear me? Okay?
Yep, sounds good.
Alright, fantastic. Well, as you all know, we went through a multi-month uh process of reviewing the charter from start to finish. As a result of that process and the multiple sessions, we had to discuss all aspects of the charter. Uh we prepared for submission to you in this ordinance, a series of questions uh that comply with the statute in terms of how long they can be and the contents, as well as the actual amendments. Uh those questions are, one, uh changing to the council manager form of government. Number two, uh changing the name of the government body from a council to a commission. And of course, on this one, we, we go back and forth, but this would make it official in the charter. Number three was the authority of the city clerk in election qualifying, because as you know, we've had some questions come up about that, and this just codifies clearly that she doesn't have authority. It's her acts to qualify people are ministerial. And then one is the scheduling of city elections. On this lot, of you will know that I reached out to the Supervisor of Elections Office, was promised that we would be able to get a speaker to talk to you. Uh we recently elected supervisor, I think I copied you all on the email for a request. Response, I sent another mail uh asking for commitment to come at least which we will proceed with a good reading. Before I tell you is, you, preference, if that's November versus March, because those are the two realistic options. And whichever one you put in, we will put in the ordinance, and if it changes, you're speaking whoever the supervisor send, then it's an easy enough change to make. It will not affect the advertising, any of those things, because it does not affect the title of the ordinance. So the actual amendments uh as drafted uh are a part of the ordinance as an exhibit. Uh and they're there with the strike through and the underline, so people can see the old language and the new. Uh and and you can make a decision from that. But with that, uh I'm here to answer any questions. You can open for public comment or decide what you want to do. I do know, and I think you were all copied on my response, that the Vice Mayor asked about a number of additional amendments that have not been vetted, discussed or approved by you, so I have not got any drafts to circulate until you all tell me what you want to do about that. But with that, I'll turn it over to the Mayor and the public period or whatever comments, questions you have for me at this point.
Okay, well, since you've added some other things, Commissioner Velazquez, why don't you start us out?
Okay, so I had received, you know, we had been kind of talking about the city charter now for almost the past two years. And um so when I returned uh from my Thanksgiving uh vacation and I realized that we actually did put this on the agenda, because it had been asked a few times and it wasn't put on. And I believe that the, some of the residents that had some recommendations did not forward the recommendations because they didn't feel it was going to become a reality. And I guess when they saw the agenda item on Friday, uh they did forward uh some recommended amendments and um and those are the amendments that I did send to Clifford, uh our attorney. And I asked him for his advice and some guidance, and from my understanding is that uh we can discuss those uh new amendments. And um it can be added to what he has already worked on. And we would just get some readings, so it would really be a discussion among the days.
So, so, so what are those?
Okay, so here is um, one of them is the employment contracts. Uh the recommendation from our public was the city attorney and city manager shall be the only employment uh contract agreement on any document uh obliges present or future employment cost from city treasury funds. A contract for employment must be authorized by the majority of the vote of the commission at a regular city council meeting. Then uh there was a reference to term limits. A city commissioner who has held office for the preceding three full consecutive terms is prohibited from appearing on a ballot for reelection to any seat. So it's really a term limit for uh a sitting commissioner. A city commissioner that has three full consecutive terms shall be precluded from running for the city mayor position. In other words, even if they've done their term limit out, they still can, uh I guess, uh run for the office of the mayor. The city mayor shall be elected for a term of four years and shall be limited to three full consecutive terms. Uh what else did I put here? Let me see. Then there was for section. Okay, section two point zero eight, city council meetings under clerk, uh clerk and city attorney, city manager, administrator. The city clerk and city attorney shall be appointed and removed by the majority vote of the commission. That was something. That was one. I think I read that one. And under four point zero three qualifying, should the city clerk become aware of any inaccuracy, the city clerk shall notify the commission at the next commission meeting. That's pretty much the amendments that were sent to me.
I think before we get the questions from the dais, um Cliff, do you want to weigh in on? Maybe, if you're driving, I'm not sure how you're going to be.
No, no, I'm not driving. Fortunately, I have a wonderful chauffeur who's been married to me for forty years, so that, that allows me to work. So I, I can weigh in on, on at least the term limits thing, because I want to make sure that from the beginning of this discussion, everybody is on the same page of what can and cannot be done legally. Term limits are fine. What's not fine is to assume, which some people in the public broadly don't understand, that they would apply retrospectively. All of your current terms, wherever they are and however many they may have been consecutively, would not count towards any of this. So if it were to pass, if we were to do this and it were to pass, it would be like birthing a new baby. Your, your term limit wouldn't begin to apply to you till your next elected term. Because anything else is retrospective and you can't do that. Uh it is because, for a simple explanation, everybody who's elected has what the law has called a property right in that office. And so you can't change the rules of the game during their property right, which is whatever the current elected term is. So for example, this came up recently in another city we represent, where there was an attempt made by citizenry to say, hey, there's a term limit and we have people who've been serving longer than the term limit, but the term that was adopted uh for that city after people already served two or three terms, and the citizenry tried to say, no, they've already served these other terms. Once we passed this term limit, they were already term limited out. That's not how this works, and it cannot. It's not like you can say, well, we'd like it to work retrospectively. Let's add that to the, no. Not possible. It's illegal. So as long as everybody understands that, nothing else about term limits concerns me. The rest of it is simply a matter for your consideration and at the appropriate time, whether that's in a future workshop or whether uh y'all want to have that discussion in detail now, it's fine by me. And I'll answer whatever questions I can, but the charter is your province. My only province is to try to keep you in the lanes between legal and illegal.
Well, uh while I got to Cliff, the, she talked about the contract for department heads. They already, everybody that comes forward is, is ratified, their contract is ratified by city council. So isn't that redundant in what we already?
Yeah, I, I, the answer is maybe. I'd need a better explanation of what it is it's trying to be accomplished. And that's the part I'm unclear on. So there was not a lot of meat on the bones. Miss, uh the Vice Mayor may have actual text, but all I had was, we'd like to see this or this or this. So without knowing if there's an actual amendment as opposed to an idea, I don't know.
Well, not much was given to me other than, than this, so um I guess when it's time for public comment, it may be explained at that, at that time.
So you don't know what that meant?
No. As far as the term limits, uh of course I understood that, that if, if that gets put on the for an amendment, it's, it's not going to be retroactive. It's about going forward. So the term limits will not affect any member that is currently sitting right now. It will only affect future elections, which I believe uh when that was sent to me, they understood that also.
I only made the comment, Vice Mayor, because we are literally going through this experience in another city right now, and I didn't want everybody under the misimpression that somehow that this can be retroactive.
No, I, I mean, I, I know that for sure. I'm sure that um these added amendments, they, they understand that also. None of, and none of these amendments are going to be retroactive. It's going to be for a future updated city charter.
Alright, um Commissioner Nest, I think you had, or you had something else? Mr. Nest, I think you had something you wanted to?
No, I didn't, I didn't send anything in or anything like that. No, I, I read and, and I appreciate um our attorney to kind of keep us on the loop of what the discussions were uh as early as possible on this. I guess there is questions as to um what the employment contract, what the goal of that is, the term limits, just the pros and cons of that, kind of walking through all of that, especially since it's not in our original uh kind of proposed amendments that we already made. So I want to make sure that, number one, the public has enough time to digest it, give feedback on any of those changes and, and provide that as well if we're going to add those. Uh which I'm not taking an opinion one way or the other right now. It's just, I think it's a little too soon. I think it, it would be beneficial to see what this looks like um to, to see and hear from the public on a kind of longer term, not just today, but later on down the road as well, on these updated amendments.
Another one that, that I mean, was, is obviously important to Commissioner Smith was the, the South Apopka Annexation, which is I don't think we're there yet either, so I don't know what, if we ever got down to a um an actual boundary, um so.
Well, I think the last time that we addressed that, the boundary that uh originally I asked was that we go all the way to McCarmine Road and uh through uh conversations with some of the other departments, it is suggested that we stop at Keene Road. And so that was the boundary that we were asking for. So uh to Keene Road to the south, Pete Mount Wakava to the east and Benyon to the west.
So the one we, we kind of flushed out last, the first time?
Okay, alright. Is that part of this though?
The annexation, I don't think is part of the city charter.
Your, your corporate boundaries are part of your city charter, but with annexations, they don't go through the same charter review process if you have an annexation. That's actually a change to the charter, to the legal description of your boundaries that's made without the referendum process. It is part of your charter, but it's a different process.
Did we discuss this during that process, during our, the charter review process?
No, you did not. Not, not as a part of the charter review.
Correct.
That was a separate meeting.
Right, right. I just don't, okay, I'm just confused about why it's being brought up right now then.
Yeah, because um I have the minutes for January tenth, the workshop, February fifteenth and April third, and there's no mention of the boundaries for annexation. It's all about the act, you know, just duties and responsibilities within the charter. And one of the things we did talk about was having the municipal elections moved to November. That was, that was another, that was a main subject in the charter amendments that we did give, uh that we did discuss.
But we're waiting to hear back from the Supervisor of Elections Allen. But I think back to the Commissioner Smith, you know, the issue on annexation. It would have to come before a vote of the, the residents, so it would, it would behoove us to put, even though it's not a part of the charter, it's still a part, it, it, it needs to be voted on by the public for that to be that, the, the involuntary annexation, basically. So we, it would be a part of that. So I, I, I think a couple of things, I think we've got to get back to um the, left us have the supervisor election, somebody from their office at least come out and kind of go through the process, and then can we get it done by March? Do we want to spend additional money to do a, a special election for March, which would only be charter amendments and or amendment for annexation, or do we wait and see if we can do it in November?
Right now, we're not talking about the annexation. That, he said that's a separate.
It would be, it would be, it would be economical to have both items on that special election. I think that's, I think, if I'm reading you right, that's where the.
Yeah, I think exclusively economically is the only benefit there. I think putting these together muddies the waters on both of them. I think having an annexation on a ballot and then having, and I'm not saying having two separate special elections, but having the annexation on with the charter is such a, both are huge items that need to be individually taken into account versus muddied together because they're so, both are so important. Uh again, I, I hear what you're saying, uh attorney, that it, obviously, I think exclusively it saves money and that's it. But we can still uh achieve economic savings by timing these correctly and not muddying the water for putting them on the same ballot.
I don't understand how, how it muddies the water.
Well, I don't understand how this is coming up now. We have not discussed during city charter workshops at all, annexation, at all. And now the mayor is putting words in your mouth, saying that you brought this up, when you've never brought this up during any of our workshops.
We did not discuss it during the workshops, but when we were discussing annexation and we asked, what we're going to move forward with it, the attorney asked if we were given some specific uh boundaries as to where we were talking about annexing to.
I remember that.
And at that time, that's when I.
I remember your notes on that, absolutely, yes.
So that's, that's what we're referencing.
Absolutely, okay, I understand that.
Yeah, so yeah, it's not, wasn't the same meeting.
No, not at all.
But I don't understand how it's going to muddy the water if we put both on the ballot at the same time.
Gives the voters more of a reason to come out and vote. We know that the, 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 these charter amendments and even the annexation, let's be honest, will be less than ten percent voter turnout. If that's the only, the only thing on.
I, I don't want to be negative by saying that we're going to have a low turnout.
We had twenty percent with, with all the Commissioners and the Mayor up, so it's going to be less than twenty percent, I can assure you of that.
This is just a weird way to bring it up. It, it feels grimy that it's being brought up in this capacity, because it wasn't brought up in our, anytime we've discussed it. If we were going to put these all on one, this should have been brought up a year ago, when we were going through the workshops and people could give feedback and we've done so many workshops on this, both on. And we've done so many workshops on this, both on annexation and on the city charter separately. We've never brought them together. And now at this meeting, for the first true reading, you're wanting to bring them together.
Well, we don't even have a date yet. We can't, we don't know when we, with the date, we haven't set a date, we haven't.
Well, I mean, but the discussion today was, my understanding was that we were, we would have moved forward with whatever amendments that our attorney Cliff had worked on, which we do have. So what I, what happened was that now I have an input from the public asking for these amendments to be considered. And the reason why it was not provided during our workshops was because after our workshops, we kind of went stagnant. We just didn't discuss it again. Then we had an election where Vice Mayor Kyle Becker had announced he was not run. And it kind of just was put on the shelf until, and I, if I'm, can recall, we were supposed to pick this back up after the election cycle, which I do remember as soon as the election cycle was done, I did ask our attorney Clifford to send the amendments to the newly elected commissioner at that time. But we've never really picked it up again. And so the pub, some of the public that was paying attention to it kind of was just waiting for us to say, okay, we're going to discuss this. At the last council meeting, I did make mention of it because I did, I was contacted. What about the city charter? We're coming to the end of the year. We haven't talked about it. Where are we with the city charter? And surprisingly, I mentioned it and the mayor agreed, put it on the next meeting, which was today. So that provided the public to kind of send the amendments. And so that's, for me, today was about discussing the added amendments that was provided by the public. There was no mention of annexation. I, I went through all the minutes. There is no mention of that annexation. This is the first for me to hear that, let's bring the annexation and the review of the city charter together. Now we've had, I mean, I have a stack of workshops that we had with South Apopka. And tell you the truth, I, I don't know what the end result was of that.
Well, we don't know what the end result of any of this is.
Well, no, there was an agreement with the city charter with the initial changes. But the only thing I'm asking now is can we consider the, the amendments that were recently sent?
You can consider them, yes. It's up to the commission and that's, that's the same as in Cliff's email response to what Cliff said earlier. You can add them between first and second reading.
Right.
So we're going to consider adding those amendments. We also can consider discussing annexation as well.
You can discuss annexation. Annexation would not be part of this ordinance. Annexation is a separate animal, it's its own process. And one thing to consider is if you're shooting for March for these, there are steps that go into annexation too. And you might be pushing up against time, uh, time limitations to try to get both done in March. I don't know, that's, that's three months is a pretty short timeframe, it's possible. But as it extends out, it may, if you're really looking at March for these, annexation might not happen by March because there is a process to that. But it would not be part of this ordinance.
It's a separate process.
It would not be part of this ordinance, correct.
Again, and we would have to have the public input. We would have to have a survey.
It's a different process. It's a completely different process than this. But to the mayor's point, both require a referendum.
What would listen, or Commissioner, I'm sorry, I didn't.
That was.
You, you got, not was, will have the public, anybody, Susan, I know Jack Douglas. Oh, we got Leroy Bell, come on down.
Leroy Bell, Apopka. You know what's funny about this annexation? Every time you bring up annexation, it always, oh, oh, we got, we can get it done, but it going, it's too, it ain't enough time. It's always hurry up, hurry up. But I want to talk about the amendments to this ordinance or whatever. Everything was mentioned itself for one thing that the public wanted. We wanted districts. You remember that in the workshop? We didn't just only wanted term limits. This way that we could hold our commissioners accountable. This way we wouldn't get the pushback that everything that this mayor wants, he gets. Because if everyone, if we had this broke up in districts, district one, district two, district three, if district two decide that he want to play with this guy and don't want to do what he's supposed to do for his community, then we can get rid of him. And this way, we don't have to worry about someone tilting the scale by helping someone get elected. Because if you live in that district, that's who you vote for. Number one, don't vote for number two. I remember, and with the annexation, annexation go all the way back when this mayor got Rick Scott to appoint his friend Rod Love to the commissioner of Orange County District Two. One of the meeting that was held down at John Bridges Center, then elected Commissioner Alexander Smith spoke. I had a meeting with Commissioner Rod Love. And he told me when we get South Apopka up to code, then we gonna annex South Apopka. I think this is just something that this mayor does just to cause confusion and get nothing done. This is another ploy of this chair. And if you guys are going to sit down and let this happen, shame on you.
Who else, Susan? Jack, go on down. Mr. Mayor, City Council, or City Commission?
Just drop the mic down just a little bit, there you go.
Uh, I just wanted to go over a few things, uh, just for clarification that is. One is, I'm aware that the clock starts on the approval of term limits at that point, which means that whatever y'all have served doesn't count towards the three terms. I, I understand that. You understand that. I'm not sure the public will understand that, but they probably wouldn't anyway because they, they're not here to hear the discussion. So I, I understand that and the people that, that I've talked to and what have you, they understand that as well. So we'll have to get that information out to the rest of the public. So when they do vote, they understand what they're voting for. The two items that are not on there that I think are very, very important are the employment contracts. This goes back to a previous administration where employment contracts were done on all the department heads and some of the staff the day before a change of administration. Okay? It's in the newspaper, you can go back and look at it and that sort of thing. That's without the city council knowing anything about it and without the public knowing anything about it. And it, I think for the sake of curing that problem, because it costs us millions of dollars. You know, it costs us citizens millions of dollars. And it cost you because you didn't have the right or the privilege to vote on them. So you couldn't, you couldn't represent the public because you didn't know anything about it. So I think those employment contracts should be in there, limited to the city attorney and the city administrator or city manager, depending on the vote. So that's, that's my reasoning behind it. We need to cure that problem that was created years ago. In the same way with the charter officers. We need to make sure it's very understood that three positions in the city are positions that work for the city council supervised by the mayor, but, but are employees of the city council. And that is the city attorney, the city clerk and the city administrator or city manager. I think that needs to be in there clarifying we had the issue. Let's, let's get rid of that issue and get, get on with it. And then the, uh, the final issue is term limits. We, we need to make sure that's in the, uh, in the charter. We need to make sure that we limit terms in the future. And I'll have, I'll answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Jack? Yeah, so to the employment contracts, yeah, we do have the contract. So when we, like when we hired Jacob, the contract came forward. But you're right, it's not in there after the fact. So good point. So I don't know, I think it's already, the, the other part is already in, in our, our, the hiring process is that the council approves the employment contract. But there isn't, to, to, to Jack's point, there's not anything in there that says six months later, if I didn't give, you know, D O or the chief of, of an employment contract that I couldn't, I'm not sure I can or can't. I, I know it was done, so I'm not, I'm not sure legally even that was a, a proper call, but.
It may not have been.
Yeah, but, but we need to.
But it did.
Yeah.
And this clarified.
Yeah, belting suspenders on that issue. I absolutely agree.
Now I understand this because I do remember that when I was elected the first time in 2014. And we discovered there were several contracts that were provided to employees and some members. And we were not aware of it. And it had not been voted by the council that was the outgoing council.
Correct.
I do remember that. So this is just, you're trying to get, so that these contracts are not done without the approval of the city council.
That's correct.
So that if, if someone presents a contract, if an employee or a director or manager or city manager presents a contract.
The, the language.
Not been approved by the city council. How does, how does that work now?
The, the language that, that I have proposed is that the city attorney and city manager are the only employees that have contracts, that can have contracts. And they must come before the city council for approval. The department heads, clerical staff, what have you, don't have employment contracts. They work at, at the discretion of the mayor.
Right.
He, he appoints and, and, and supervises their, their workload. So it'll only be two people.
Yeah.
Two positions that would have employment contracts.
Drew, I know you, you look like you want to weigh in here.
While the speakers at the podium has had a question, because there's, there's wrinkles. It goes to the, I think, the confusion point because you, one of the, one of the proposed amendments at this point is moving from a mayor council form to a manager council form and which creates a wrinkle here if we were to also in the same referendum have a question that says, should the city administrator or the city manager and the city attorney be the only parties that have employment contracts? Because we don't know at this point, if that's, if that's what goes out to referendum, we don't know if it will be administrator or manager. We don't know if it will be mayor or a manager that has those hiring, firing decisions. So that, that mayor council, potential mayor council change really kind of flows downstream and could have impact on this. And so while you were at the podium, I wanted to ask, is, I think what I'm hearing is the real important thing to you is the, any employment contracts get approved by council? And maybe less important is only two positions could have them because I think that might create a wrinkle that gets really hard to draft around prospectively at this stage. And the other, the other just thing that rattles around in my head on it is today, I think, yeah, I, I think you certainly can make that work 10 years from now, 20 years from now. I don't know what practices will be in cities. And we could see other positions, you know, fall into that. Yeah, this is a typical employment contract position, but if it says in your charter, you're still going to be limited to those two. So I was curious if you had any thoughts after hearing all of that? If you had any thoughts to what if the charter question were just, should all employment contracts come to the full council?
Well, I know it happened in a previous administration. And, uh, and I don't think a secretary should have an employment contract. I don't think a recreation director should have an employment contract. You know, I, I just don't believe that's necessary. So I believe the city attorney should have a contract either as a full-time employee or as a contracted vendor. Of course, the city manager or the city administrator. I don't think you're going to get a good manager to come to our city in the future without negotiating terms of, of employment. I know, I just don't think you're going to find that kind of caliber person wanting to do that. But I don't think you're going to have a problem hiring department heads without a contract. I don't think that'll be a problem. That's just my personal opinion and that's, you know, that's where I'm at on it.
All right. Thank, thank you, Jack, appreciate it.
Anything else?
Any other questions for Jack?
Thank you.
All right.
Rod Olson, 3156 Rolling Hills Lane. Uh, anyhow, rate whether or not it's the annexation, it's the charter. I'm, as a taxpayer, I'm tired of this spin and kicking the can down the road. Uh, I don't pretend to know government. I'll pretend to work in government and historically, uh, did work at university for a while. So I have a little bit of a feel, but most have been business. In business, you set goals, you set timeframes and you hold people accountable. We need to set a date. If March is the date that has to go on the ballot, what's the drop back from that? If that's not viable, then is November the next date? I don't know, but what's the viable date? Set timeframes, bang, bang, bang. This is what we're doing. Yes, something might happen to move that needle, but we continue to have meet, meet, meet and push, 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 and nothing gets done. I'm tired. Thanks.
Nikki McGuire, Apopka. On, first of all, I want to say, Apopka is a great city. Like anything else, anyplace else, there's always room for improvement. However, on the terms of contract, within the city, we already have a lot of open positions that's not being filled. You guys need to carefully consider removing the contract part of it because contract also builds, it, it protects both sides, the employee and employer, as well as it provides stability. If you're giving positions without contracts and only two people have contracts, what is stopping that person from seeing an opening job in another city? That one might be a better pay, two might just be, hey, a contract with security. What will stop them from leaving? So we may want to, before we dunk play positions, we may want to consider, we losing a lot of great people working for the city already. Let's not try to lose anymore. Um, and for everything else would have changed, but I think we should consider more job stability rather than fighting about who gets a contract. Thank you.
Anybody else? This is, um, really would like to get the supervisor elections to come down and.
He, he did, he did say that.
Right, I mean.
He said he has spoken to.
Right, next, for the next meeting.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so what I'd like to do is let's push it to that till we can figure out when the election. I think, you know, I brought back up the annexation, which is, obviously it's not a part of the charter, but it's a part of a, a, um, referendum that needs to be voted on by the public. And we could ask, ask both questions of the supervisors. I guess it would be their attorney. I guess would be their attorney. I'm not even sure who. Drew, who would?
I wasn't part of that.
Yes, yeah, let me let me help you with that.
Okay.
So. The one question is simple. That doesn't require them to show up. I can actually call them and say. If we are going to try to put this char- charter referendum on the next election for March, what is the deadline for you to receive from us, the ordinance? To to then prepare the ballot? And usually. I will let's just say this, I will be surprised if it's not before the end of this month. And I use that as an example. Because the last time I had a March election. Charter amendment that led the deadline to get on the ballot was in December. The only thing that gives me any reason to pause on that is that we're going to have a new supervisor of elections. And so when Ms. Dentel takes office, she may change the rules and that's unpredictable. But that's a phone call as opposed to have a meeting. But what is a meeting? Because y'all will have questions and I don't know why their policy is what it is or whether it still will remain the same. Under Dentel as it was under the predecessors. But what they told me and that's what I explained to you is they do not want municipal elections in November. They want them in March. They want state and national elections in November. I ask, as you will recall, is that a rule? Is that a policy? Is that a statute? And they didn't really come up with an answer. What I think we landed on was it must be some sort of a policy. They never provided a copy and I asked at that time, would someone be willing to come down and explain all this because I think my folks would like November if they have a choice. But they don't want to be foolish about it. And so they said yes, but then when I sent the email following our last meeting saying, hey, can you come to the meeting in December fourth? And talk about it. I never got a response. I think I copied the mayor. I think I copied others on that email. If I didn't, I'll be more than happy to send it. But it's not. There's been no response and I sent a follow up email today and said, hey, look, clearly you're not going to be at the December fourth meeting. Can you be at the December eighteenth meeting? And then my assumption was that that would be the the second reading date. So. That I still haven't heard from that one either, but that issue, the issue of when the election would be. Is the one that I think that merits them showing up. Some of these others may as well, but that's the one. That y'all will have questions that I don't have answers for because it has nothing to do with me. It's about their them and their policy and how they run their elections.
Can we get a copy of that email? I I don't think I was on that email or saw that.
The the one where I requested in the B here?
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, I'll send it to you right now.
Thank you.
Okay. So. I I think we, you know, we definitely need to have the supervisor election, somebody from their office come and talk to us about. The procedurals and whether we want. Well, first of all, there won't be a November of. Twenty five anyway. So the question is, do we want to do a special? In March of twenty six, which would be just. Our charter and or annexation if we can do that together.
No. The whole thing today was to try and get this in for March of twenty twenty five. It did not involve the annexation. I understand the annexation. I think the annexation in itself is a much. It it it. It needs. Public comment. It needs for us to do a survey. And I feel that by. Adding the annexation to this. What you're doing is prolonging and updating the city charter. I mean, this has been talked about. The city charter, the conversation. I mean, I have minutes going all the way back to July of twenty twenty three. And. It, you know, we were kind of piecemealing it, talking about it, not talking about it. And then we finally started having workshops in twenty twenty four. And then it and and then after March, we just kind of. Didn't do anything else.
So without assuming without assumptions, do we have a timeframe or annexation? What is the time? If we want to start the process now, what's the timeframe? What does that look like? I think we so we can talk facts and not.
You're at the very least, you are two public hearings with time in between. You are to the the study. The the municipal services study, that would be requirement. Before you get to your first reading, there's notice requirements. So I mean, I think just from start to finish of annexation moving quickly, you're probably looking at three months.
Three months.
And then this gets back to what you heard Cliff say, which is ballot matters. We're looking at usually about three month lead time supervisor here and supervisors elsewhere. That tends to be about the lead time. So you can kind of count out. That's why I say annexation in March is probably a pipe dream.
So it sounds like if we start now, the process now. Right, we'll start the three month, three to six month time. I think we just need to start the process when it comes to annexation because we're kicking that down the road as well. So I'll say if we start the process annexation today, what it looks like, how do we move forward? We're starting that process with the first step today. And then we move forward with annexation, the that process.
And and let's be honest, the March is not because it will be a one off election. There will be no other. No, nobody else will be on the election in March. You can move it to March, April or May. And put. All of them in. You could put the charter amendments and the the annexation in May. Because it's it's going to be a one off election. There's no other thing that's going to be on that election. So.
If you're doing special, you're not tied to March.
Right, so why not put them together? What you I mean, everybody talks about the lack of participation and voter turnout. Well, I can tell you that March of twenty five is going to be a. It doesn't matter if it's March, April, May, it's going to be a horrible turnout. So we might as well wait till May where we've got more of a reason to go vote, which is if if you're if 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 voting for voting against annexation is important to you. You'll come out. If voting for these charter amendments is important to you, you'll come out. And there's probably ten percent on either side that don't care about the other issue, but they will come out because of the the one side or the other they want they want to vote on. So. I don't see that we're in a. We're not in a big rush because the annex, the these, I mean, I guess some of these things would 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 take place now or or when when. Adopted, but the the as far as like term limits, that won't change. And I I can I could I can make the commitment that to to Jack Douglas's point, we won't, we're not going to sign any, I wouldn't do it anyway, but. Make that commitment. So if that's the big issue for for the public, I'm I'm fine making that commitment. We won't. That we won't give anybody contracts going out the door. So.
Isn't on the annexation side of things, isn't there a substantial amount of notices that are required? I mean, it's a totally different.
Whole process.
We have to, I mean, it's cost us, the cost of it is totally different. It's a totally different beast that we're going to try to run simultaneously that we didn't budget for.
The the process for annexation is really the same process. It's not the same process you take for other ordinances. The the referendum, the referenda, I guess I'd say at the same time, that's that's elections tying it together. I I don't see there being a problem procedurally for you to try to get to that point if you wanted them on simultaneous referendum. I don't think that complicates it. Whether it complicates the elect, whether it confuses the electorate, that's the question that I'll stay out of. But process wise, it's no different. It's it's another agenda item.
Don't we have to notify both incorporated and unincorporated Apopka during that time for that election though? Like both have to be notified separately, correct?
Depends on how you want to run the referend- the referenda for annexation is typically by statute. It is the area being annexed. And. The local governments have the option of also asking your current residents, do you want to annex? That's up to you, but by statute. You have to have a referendum of the group being annexed. So it it could potentially be two entirely different voting voting blocks. You could have, if you do it just by the statutory requirement. You just have South Apopka residents who would be voting on the annexation while you have Apopka residents voting on the existing charter.
So then it wouldn't to to that point, then then it wouldn't bring out any more or less. It'd be the exact same as if we ran them separately.
You might have two different groups who are voting on two, each voting on a different question.
So it wouldn't bring more out. It would just be two separate groups voting.
Assuming that you chose not to have a referendum of the existing Apopka residents, correct?
I just don't understand what would be the benefit, the cost benefit for doing two separate special elections.
There's not, you're, it's absolutely more economical to do it on one. Totally agree. But there's such big important factors. We haven't even come up with a the delineation of where we're going to annex to. I know Commissioner Smith said Keene now. But I remember McCormick. I don't remember why Keene now, but we to all of us agree on that and make sure that we get feedback from. The residents that were discussing their properties and real estate and things like that as well. So. I mean, there's a lot that goes into it. So I just want to, I don't want to rush anything. I want to make sure. The only reason to do that is to save money, which I totally get for it, all about it. But I want to make sure that the residents that we are annexing. And the charter amendments that we're proposing are both taken into account and not muddied one way or the other to where somebody could say. That we don't want term limits because now we're getting a new voter base and I want them to be able to run as long as possible, whatever it may be, there's. You can convolute both and muddy the waters to where they they can be ran separately and still be successful. I'm just worried about how politics get into play with it and and muddy these waters unnecessarily. That's my concern.
Well, I I don't think it's going to muddy the water and, you know. Commissioner Vasquez say, you know, we've been talking about the charter amendment for the last two or three years, but we've been talking about annexation for the last six years.
So it's been forty years, I think. The last one they did was nineteen eighty's.
Different. It's too different with with we're talking about two different.
They're both important.
They're both important. So why would you want them on? Right now, we haven't really done any work with the South Apopka annexation since the last workshop.
When was the last time we did something with?
I I have to bring out the the part, the package that I have at home. This, we have been talking consistently about this for the last two years.
So I guess what's the question on the floor now? What are we trying to decide? We're trying to decide about if we should have. Two separate special elections or one election or should we start the process?
Technically, we're only talking about charter amendments.
We were, when I came. As far as the agenda item, it was just the city charter. That was it. It had nothing to do with the annexation. Had nothing to do with the south side of Apopka and the annexation. That's a whole separate. Subject matter. And that's something that we kind of also. We had workshops. We talked about sending out a survey. We 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 had some suggestions, but nothing was ever followed through.
So I think it's. Safe to say that we just need to move forward with that process. I think we just need to start the process.
Nothing was followed through. There were a lot of suggestions. Nothing was followed through.
Can I have two seconds?
Yeah, we've closed public comment. Go ahead.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Virginia Street, twenty one nineteen, Palm Street Drive. I don't know what the reason is that you want to combine these things. Because you're trying to push apples and oranges, two separate conversations. So why don't we, because right now we're just spinning our wheels talking about this. The the charter is what we came to talk about. Let's talk about the charter and not anything else. And then if you come back and you want to talk about some the other one, the amendment, let's talk about that then. Don't seem like we've done enough homework on the amendments to even talk about it right now. And trying to catch one up with the other. I don't know what the purpose of that is because it's muddy in the water. So if we could just please just talk about the charter. And then if we have an election for the charter, I mean, if people want to vote, they're going to vote. Right? You can't think you're going to get more people because you combined these two things. That's just not reality. And and the people in South Apopka. Need to have some voice in what is going to be on that annex. And that that hasn't happened yet. So I just think to the fair thing to do is we've done the homework on the charter. We've got, we know what we need to do. We we flushed it out. I think we need to go ahead and focus on that. You know, otherwise, you know, we're we're not being wise with our time. So if we could do that, that would be great. That would be great.
I do. I just I just want to talk about the charter right now.
That's right.
I feel the the issue with South Apopka and the annexation is very important. And to the point was that I do remember Commissioner Smith talking about. Squaring off to McCormick and today he said that there was some changes made. I don't know when those changes were made. We never discussed it that we were bringing it down to Keene and South Canyon. That's a whole, that's a whole new discussion for me.
And again, that was the, that was the original.
No, it wasn't. No, it was not. No.
Road was the.
No, it was not. And that I have no recollection of that. I remember McCormick. And so he's mentioning now Keene. You know what? I would like to see the minutes of that. Of that discussion that took place. I don't have that. Right now, I didn't come prepared. I did not come prepared today to talk about anything with annexation or referendum. Today, what was on the agenda, what I asked at the last council meeting was. Let's bring the city charter up. And let's talk about the amendments. And so the only other thing I did was write an email to our attorney Cliff. To say, listen, I received an email. With some recommendations of of amendments that were not discussed. I'll be guided by you. Now. The mayor is bringing up or the chair is bringing up the annexation. I mean, now we're we're moving away from the city charter.
Yeah, stay on the charter, please.
Okay, all right.
Please, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting me speak.
You know. I'm a little confused right now because. I don't want to push that. We've been talking about the city charter. Yes, you are correct, Commissioner Smith. We have been talking about the annexation, not the last six years. Let's I I mean, I've been here almost ten years. It's ten years. I've been hearing about the annexation and my understanding is that it goes even before. It goes way back into the nineties till now and. I mean, we've made an effort. We've had some workshops. We've we've had some surveys done. But it also went stagnant, the same way the city charter went stagnant. And it went stagnant after the last election, which was this March. So I don't know, can we stay on point and just do the city charter? That's where I want to go. If we want to start working on the annexation again. I'm all for it, but right now today. What was on the agenda was the city charter. So I just, I just want to stay on point with this. I don't know why the annexation came into this.
Mr. Mayor, could I just have one minute?
Well, you allowed you allowed a a a public speaking afterwards.
It's just a point, the point to to give direction. Is it possible that the council could give the city attorney? The direction to in to include the items we discussed today in the ordinance?
I don't think we can. Can we add? We can't add anything to what's in the first.
It's first reading. So if you want, if you want that included for second, now would be the time to tell us.
Say that again?
You're on first reading. If you want those items included for second, now would be the time to tell us, yes.
I'm not ready yet.
I'm not ready. I haven't. Just got it today.
Well, and and to to the point too, there was other. Districts brought up again and other concerns as well that. Maybe it's we table this to the next meeting. To get everybody's input again on these new ones, make sure we have a good understanding on on term limits, feedback on that. I'm understanding the contracts a little bit better now, but make sure we have pros and cons of that. Obviously, some some pitfalls were brought up too of where we may. Get in trouble. So make sure that we have kind of where we're at and make sure everyone's comfortable with it, get a lot of public input and make decisions from there.
So we just need some language for that. That, okay. Okay, so and what we'll try to do is try to get the the supervisor, put her before on the agenda before. We bring up. The charter, just so we know, then we at least we can set, start looking at dates. I know a pretty well.
Can can I speak quickly, Mayor? I just want to make sure I understand. Okay, so I I am to take the vice mayor's email and try to turn that into amendments. I guess I'll try to consult. It seems like they came from Mr. Douglas. I just want to make sure I capture whatever it is that that we captured. And will we be on, are we going to table this first reading and do it again on the eighteenth?
We have, yeah, two chances, two bites at the apple, yes.
Okay, because then you'll have some language in front of you.
Right.
But I want to caution people because we do not know. What the supervisor is going to tell us about the deadline for the March election and it could well be. That if we do the first reading on December eighteenth. By the time we can do a second reading in January, that deadline will have passed now. Deadlines are made to be broken if you know the right people. So perhaps Ms. Dentel, as she takes office, would say, no problem, we'll give you till January or whatever. But just know, I can't promise that because I don't make those deadlines. They tell us when to get stuff in and we get it in. So if they said, I'm sorry, you needed to get it to us, you know, by the twentieth. And you won't have your next meeting till January, so it'll have to be on the next election after that unless you want to pay for a special. That's not on me. That's me telling you that I have no right idea right now what their deadline is going to be.
But but Cliff, it's going to be a special election anyway. There's nothing for March. So if we push it to April, not, it's not going to change anything.
No, 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 I just, it's not about this money. It's about the timing because March is when all the other lectures.
Forget about the, I mean, the timing is, yeah, it takes so many days to, to go through the process to get.
Correct.
But it won't matter, what I'm saying is if we push the election to April, it won't, you know.
Yeah, it's all fine with me. I just wanna make sure everybody's on the same page.
Yeah, okay. Alright, so.
The only other thing I just wanna say this, I, I heard him say first and second reading. But I understand from previous administrations with certain ordinances that, and I did confirm that with our city clerk, that there could be a possibly a third reading if we needed it. Am I correct in saying that?
Yeah, you, you don't have to, I mean, essentially a, a third, uh, reading, if you will, is when you get to the second one and you don't finish and you, you say, hey, we, we still have public comment or we still have issues and whether you consider it a table or a continuation to a second date because you need to more public input, all of those things, nothing, there's no, no limit on how many readings you can actually have, as long as you have the minimum, which is the two.
Okay.
But just to, to clarify that, since I get to see body language, Cliff. Once you approve on second reading though, that ordinance is approved. There's not a third, there's no second is third reading.
Okay.
You can get the second reading on your agenda if you do not vote, if you table that, if you come back with more changes, you can do that however many readings it takes, but you're still coming back on second reading.
Okay. Well, thank you for clarifying that. Thank you.
Okay, alright. Any other questions? I'll wait for Mister Smith. Too important, I need to wait on him before we make this.
Oh, absolutely.
Alright, looking for a motion to table ordinance number three thousand seventy-two and bring forward back on December the eighteenth. Got a motion by Commissioner Velasquez, second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor? All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Okay, next up. Ordinance number three thousand seventy-four.
Ordinance number three thousand seventy-four. An ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the City of Apopka. Changing the future land use designation from county rural to mixed use for certain real property owned by Timothy Birchfield, Robert and Stacy Moss, located west of Golden Gem Road, south of Nightshade Grove Lane and Sadler Road, comprising nineteen point seven six acres more or less, providing for severability, conflicts and ineffective date.
Jean Sanchez.
Good afternoon, Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department. This is a request to accept the first reading of ordinance number three zero seven four amending the future land use designation for Golden Grove from county rural to mixed use. The properties are located west of Golden Gem Road and south of Night, Nightshade Grove Lane and Sadler Road. It's approximately nineteen point seven six acres in size. Golden Grove was annexed into the city on October sixteen, twenty twenty-four under ordinance number three zero seven three. The properties are within the Wakava Parkway Interchange Vision Plan area, Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Element Policy twenty point nine and the Calabark Interchange Form Base Code require that the subject properties are to have a mixed use future land use designation which would permit up to five dwelling units per acre. Orange County Public Schools has indicated that capacity for the proposed development on this property is available for elementary and middle schools and capacity is deficient at the high school level by eight point five students. The location is served by Zellwood, Wolf Lake and Apopka High Schools. The DRC recommends approval at its meeting on November twelve, twenty twenty-four. Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval. The recommended motion is to accept the first reading of ordinance number three zero seven four and hold it over for second reading and adoption on December eighteenth or soon thereafter. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Any questions for Jean?
Um, just to kind of a recollection for me is that it was annexed on ten, on October sixteenth.
Yes, ma'am.
I believe, is that the one that I, I actually voted no because it's Golden Gem?
Yes, that's what I recall. It passed three to two.
Right, cause it was a, a three-two vote.
Yes, ma'am.
Because it has to do with Golden Gem Road. Okay, I just wanted to be reminded of that.
Any other questions for Jean? Anybody from the public wishes to speak on this one?
I got a question for the council. Or engineer, I don't see him here today. Maybe Riley can answer it. Do we have any, um, sewer lines out there? Do we have any water lines out here? Where's these people gonna take a dump gonna go? And y'all keep building? I mean, come on. We have no, no, no type of facilities out there, even though we've received money from the county partial grant. You, don't squeeze your eyes, you know what I'm talking about. We have no plants out there. The road is inefficient. It won't handle it. Where's, and I know what Rodney will get up here and say, where's these kids gonna go to school at? In trailers? I have no, have no problem annexing property in. But the leadership of this city is failing. It's not only failing the citizens that's been here for generations. It's failing the people that don't even live here yet. This ridiculous. Y'all gonna build a place? We gonna put outhouses out there? No clue. That's what I thought.
Rod Olson, thirty-one fifty-six, Earl and Hills Lane. I choose to speak on this one that fits all, but he's kinda hit part of it, just the aspect of infrastructure. Do we have the infrastructure with all this growth? We've got, by my estimation, right around over a thousand apartments going in. More housing, we're at sixty-one thousand people right now. And, uh, and I comment on this one in particular because this is the first of the, of the ordinances that pops up that shows both acres and number of units, which means I can look at and say, oh, nineteen point seven five acres says we're gonna be adding twenty to as many as a hundred homes. That should be on each and every item if I was requested before. Uh, four, I think, six, five and six do have that this time, but having that information available. Uh, for most homeowners don't have the time. I don't have the time all the time with my volunteer work to go in and dive into the detail to say, oh, well, that's really forty-seven acres, so that's a hundred and twenty acres. That should be on this sheet as these are. Thank you.
Anybody else from the public wish to speak on this one? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Look for a motion to approve ordinance number three thousand seventy-four at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
Uh, Mayor, before we get to much, can can you go back? Do we have water and sewer?
Afternoon, Jeff Summit with Summit Engineering. I'm the applicant. It's, uh, three six six seven. I'm in the place Lake Mary, Florida. So Commissioner Smith, to your questions, yes, we do. You have a water main out there, you have a reclaim line, and you also have a forced main for sewer out there. So those were put in several years ago when the first project on Golden Gem went in. The city actually undertook that utility capital improvement project. You got a thirty inch reclaim out there. You've got, I believe it's a sixteen inch water, it's October sixteen, and it's a, uh, it's a twelve inch force main that's out there. So this project will connect to the same utilities that the Parkview Project connected to that the Golden Orchard Project connected to and the project that the Gardenia Reserve Project is connected to. So they're, they're all getting their utilities from the exact same location.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you. Okay. Looking for a motion to approve ordinance number three thousand seventy-four at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
Go move.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson. All those in favor? All opposed? Three to, okay, motion carries three to two with Commissioner Velasquez and Commissioner Nesta in opposition. Next up, ordinance number three thousand eighty-three.
Ordinance number three thousand eighty-three. An ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida amending the future lu, land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the City of Apopka. Changing the future land use designation from mixed use to residential very low suburban for certain real property loan owned by Roseville Farms LLC. Located north of Poncan Road, east of Poncan Pines Road and west of Jason Dwelly Parkway. Comprising twenty-eight point four four acres more or less, providing for severability, conflicts and ineffective date.
Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department. This is a request to, to accept the first reading of ordinance number three zero eight three. The future land use amendment of the Roseville Properties from mixed use to residential very low suburban. The properties are located north of Poncan Road, east of Poncan Pines Road and west of Jason Dwelly Parkway. It's approximately twenty-eight acres in size. The applicant is requesting the amendment of the land use designation to be consistent with the comparable surrounding properties in the area including Wolf Lake Ranch, phase one on the south. The properties to the north and south have future land use designations of residential very low suburban and the future land use of, of the said designation allows two dwelling units per acre. According to the city's Comprehensive Plan Policy three point five under the future land use element, residential developments north of Poncan Road and west of Rock Springs Road or Park Avenue will be restricted to nor, to no more than two dwelling units per acre unless it's within the Form Base Code area. The DRC recommends approval at its meeting on November twelve, twenty twenty-four. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the proposed amendment. The recommended motion is to accept the first reading of ordinance number three zero eight three and hold it over for second reading and adoption on December eighteenth or soon thereafter. Staff is available for questions.
Any questions for Jean?
This is also Golden Gem Road?
No, ma'am. This is Poncan Road. This is, um, just west adjacent of, um, the northwest, uh, Recreation Complex as well as Wolf Lake Elementary.
Oh, okay, I'm looking.
Do you remember the, uh, Wolf Lake Ranch just south of it? This will be phase two of that.
Okay, because what, the, the newspaper that you attached to this was ordinance thirty seventy-four.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, that was the previous one. We'll double check for second reading.
That's why I'm looking and I'm saying, it says Golden Gem. Wait a minute, so let me look at this one. One moment. This is November fifteenth. Okay, thirty eighty-three. Okay. For some reason you have, uh, before it, you have ordinance thirty seventy-four attached to this.
Yes, the way the newspaper gives us proofs is when they're run at the same time, they're all attached in one.
Oh.
Yeah.
No, because.
The first page would be three zero seven.
No, no, the advertisement is. Wait a minute, I'm, I'm looking at this.
They were advertised at the same time.
This one is October eighteenth.
There's one for October eighteenth and there's one both advertised at the same time, November. We're required to advertise at least twice.
Okay, took a while for this.
Yeah.
Do the second page, okay.
I'll, I'll do a little better with only attaching one of them.
Attaching the one that's supposed to be there, okay.
Any other questions for Jean on this one?
No.
Okay, anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter?
Rod Olson, thirty-one fifty-six, Earl and Hills Lane. I don't wanna take more time, so I'm gonna hit this and go with that, but this means fifty-six more residents, more, more dwellings. That means twelve to sixteen new students or a portable. Please keep this in mind when you're approving new development.
Anybody else? Okay, not, we'll close the public hearing. Look for a motion to approve ordinance number three thousand eighty-three at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
Oh, we had a standstill?
Looking for a motion, deny it or approve it?
Okay, so moved.
Look, we have a motion to approve ordinance number three thousand eighty-three at first reading, hold over for second reading by Commissioner Velasquez. Second by Commissioner Anderson. All those in favor? Aye.
Alright.
All opposed?
No.
Okay, it's four to one with the opposition, Nick Nesta. Okay.
Commissioner Nick Nesta.
Commissioner Nick Nesta. Okay, next up, ordinance number three thousand eighty-four.
Ordinance number three thousand eighty-four. An ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida changing the zoning from M U E S G T mixed use gateway east shore to R S F one B residential single family large lot for certain real property owned by Roseville Farms LLC. Generally located north of Poncan Road, east of Poncan Pines Road and west of Jason Dwelly Parkway. Comprising twenty-eight point four four acres more or less, providing for severability, conflicts and ineffective date.
For the record, Jean Sanchez, the Community Development Department. This is a request to accept the first reading of ordinance number three zero eight four, a change of zoning from M U E S G T to R S F one B residential single family large lot for Roseville Properties. This is the companion rezoning item to the preceding future land use amendment. The applicant is requesting the change of zoning of the property to be compatible with the phase one Wolf Lake Ranch subdivision on the south. The proposal of R S F one B zoning district is consistent with the future, the proposed future land use designation of residential very low suburban is listed in the Land Development Code. The applicant has provided a zoning conceptual plan proposing fifty-six lots, um, as phase two of the Wolf Lake Ranch, sharing ingress egress with phase one. Final details, of course, of the site design will be determined at both major development plan and construction site plan. The DRC recommends approval at its meeting on November twelve, twenty twenty-four. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval. The recommended motion is to accept the first reading of ordinance number three zero eight four and hold it over for second reading and adoption on December eighteen or soon thereafter. Staff zap is available for questions.
Okay, any questions for Jean? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this one? If not, close the public hearing.
I noticed the city employee made a quick dash out after he made a comment, we've got pa, uh, positive sewer mains out on Golden Gem. Am I mistaken? He said six inch positive main? You didn't hear? I, I think you did. If that's true, under United States statutes in engineering, a, a six inch positive main will only handle seven hundred and three units. How many units y'all?
Sixteen inch, I think it was sixteen.
Sixteen inch, okay, let's, six inches. Let's triple it. Twenty-one hundred square units or units. How many units y'all putting out there? And plus, that pipe's got to go somewhere. Your engineer, and you know he's already said it because you talked and sold, we got a Glenn into sell those little bitty old sewer plants in her front yard that you can buy at a dime store. Our plant is incapable of handling much more. We're at capacity almost. If I'm not mistaken, are we or are you not? We're not? We're, we got plenty of room? Anyway, guys, we need to look at everything we're doing. I don't know why he got up and left, but I mean, we had more questions he could have answered maybe, but sixteen inch is not gonna do it either.
Anybody else from the public wish to speak on this one? Okay, if not, we'll close the public hearing. Look for a motion to approve ordinance number three thousand eighty-four. At first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith. Second by Commissioner Anderson. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion carries four to one with Commissioner Nesta in opposition. Next up, resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty-nine.
Resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty-nine. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida. Electing to use the uniform method of collection. Non-advalorm assessments for more than one year levied on certain real property in Apopka, Florida. Stating a need for such levy, providing for the mailing of the resolution and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Susan Blanche, Chairman of Funding and Director. Um, City Council intends to use the method of collecting non-advalorm assessment. Levied against um, certain real property comprising the Emerson Park subdivision located in Apopka, Florida. Um, there's a legal description attached to this agenda item as an exhibit A. The resolution is adopted pursuant to and is authorized by section one ninety-seven point three six three-two of Florida statutes. Which allows such assessment to be collected annually commencing in November of twenty twenty-five. In the same manner as tax advalorm taxes. The council is holding a, and do they advertise public hearing for the purpose of considering the adoption of this resolution? Proof of publication of such hearing is attached as exhibit B.
Hey, any questions?
This is, this is just a resolution to state how we will be collecting money back from this community. It's not how much, it's not how much per home, anything of that capacity. It's just saying how we will collect it back. How we'll get repaid.
The process for collecting through the tax um, role.
Understood.
Through the tax.
Thank you.
And that is step number nine.
Yes, ma'am.
Chart.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Any other questions for Blanche? Dave, you good? Okay, anybody else from the public wish to speak on this one? All right, not, we'll close the public hearing. Look for motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty-nine. Got a motion by Commissioner Velasquez. Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks. Next up, City Council reports. Mr. Nesta, get us started.
We should start on the other side, please.
I'm not ready either. I'm still trying to go through my notes.
Commissioner Smith, you wanna?
Well, I just want to say that uh, during Thanksgiving holidays, there was many organizations that was providing. Uh, food and resources to uh. To not just our homeless community, but all those that was less fortunate, those standing in need. And uh, there was an abundance of uh, opportunities for food giveaways, and I think they was all successful. So we're looking forward to the Christmas holidays to do the same.
Awesome. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Velasquez.
Okay, um, I did attend my first Lake Apopka Natural Gas District Meeting. Um, there will be no meeting in December. Um, and the next meeting, I believe, is January twenty-fifth, and they just basically went over what their minutes were from. The meeting, uh, the last meeting that uh, our former vice mayor sat on. Um. That's that. I I did miss you at that meeting, Commissioner Smith. Um, I attended the music to my mind. There were two performances, one at the Church of Nazarene. I did attend that this past Sunday. The next performance is over at the Apopka Community Center this Sunday. And being that the month of December with all the uh, different uh. Holiday events, I will not be able to attend that one, so that's why I went to support it at the Church of Nazarene. So I'm hoping that our community does go out and support this. It's a, it's a nice Christmas holiday uh, special. And uh, you'll enjoy it. Uh, yesterday we had the swearing in here of the three new police officers. So where is, we're up to how many in the Apopka Police Department with the three new ones? Okay. And then, of course, we have actively going shop with the cop. I was there last night, and this will be going through December, next Friday, December thirteenth. So if any of our members on the uh, council, um. Just, you know, it'd be nice to show up. The the families do appreciate our elected officials showing up and just showing support. So I did that last night, and hopefully, maybe even tonight I'll go again, but it's been fun, and I'll tell you the truth. You're pretty much in and out of there within the hour because it's so organized by the police department. And the families are really excited, especially the the students. So um, that's it, that's it, my man.
Mr. Anderson?
Okay, yes, I was just trying to find an email that one of what I, it's not, I think it's, my emails are still getting mixed up. So I had a resident that reached out to me with some concerns, uh, well verbally, and they sent an email, but I'm assuming that my email is still being mixed up with the. So it's N L Anderson at Apopka dot net. So I think a lot of residents are emailing me, and they're emailing dispatchers, so hopefully. Um, that resident is able to see me that email, so I can actually kind of discuss. It was something kind of important, but I don't, I don't have the email, so I'm assuming it probably went over to dispatch. So I do apologize, because I know the resident is actually listening, so I apologize. I tried to find the email. It's not here, so I didn't receive it. Uh, so another thing is uh, echoing what Commissioner um, Smith referenced in regards to Thanksgiving giveaways. Um, I had my first annual turkey giveaway. It was a great success, had a lot of sponsors, a lot of community involvement. Um, we were able to give about hundreds of turkeys, um, thousands of dollars in gift cards, gift baskets, and it was a great success. I am doing something for the Christmas um, season as well. Um, please check my Facebook page for details. I'm looking for sponsors as well. Um, this is the type, time of the year, um, that a lot of families um, go without and are sad. So is there anything that anyone needs? Um, is something that I can do? Um, here, please reach out to me, um, via email, via phone. Um, I'll do all I can to try to bridge that gap, and um, that's actually all I have. Thank you.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Nesta.
Absolutely, so uh, just want to say hopefully everyone had a great Thanksgiving. Um, this week, we're back to office hours tomorrow. I'm back to office hours tomorrow, so. It's again every Thursday from eleven AM to one PM here at City Hall, so any resident, non-resident, whoever wants to come. Speak to me. I try to limit to about thirty-minute sessions per resident, um, just to be able to get as many in and out as I can and talk to as many people as possible, so. That's uh, happening again tomorrow here at City Hall from eleven AM to one PM. It'll happen next week as well on Thursday. Eleven PM to, or eleven AM to one PM, and I just look forward to seeing everyone there. And as always, uh, Mayor, just confirm me, you're gonna be turning off the public comments again so that the residents are silenced from being heard?
Yes, sir.
That's a yes?
Yes.
Wow.
Okay, next up. Jacob, what you got?
I have anything except for in the spirit of Thanksgiving. Um, I am grateful to be here in Florida where it's normally, I'd say it's warm. A little cold today, but anyways. And um, I'm grateful to you, the commission, as well as the mayor, for giving me this opportunity to serve the people of Apopka.
Drew, anything? Good, good, good. Um, I don't know if, and this clip probably hasn't gone left the the call, but I do want to kind of. Uh, as we go into the legislative session, if there are any um. Le- legal issues that that you guys see bubbling up, we sure would like to, you know, obviously, they start committee weeks, I guess. Is it next week? I mean, it's pretty, pretty quick, and then they'll get hot and heavy in January, so if anything that you can see that's gonna be on the radar. I plan on making a couple of trips up to Tallahassee if we get some, some funding issues on the, on the table, so. Okay, thank you. Uh, under the mayor's report. Let's go, tree lighting is uh, Friday night, uh, December sixth, so come on down to Kettleman Nelson Park, six PM. It's always a great, a great time. I love to see everybody there. Uh, on Saturday, the December the seventh, uh, starting at four thirty, at Camp Weewah is the Jingle Mingle, which uh, benefits the uh. epilepsy foundation. Uh, Commissioner Velasquez just brought up the music to my mind, which is Sunday, uh, at seven thirty PM at Apopka Community Center. Um, on Monday, we have a uh, a workshop or or input, I got more of an input meeting. About a raise grant. Um. It will be December the ninth, so Monday, five thirty PM at the Frank Carlton. And what we're trying to do is we, we put in an application two years ago for a raise grant, which is a big uh, federal grant. Um, tens of millions of dollars that will go toward infrastructure improvements, and. One of the areas that two years ago we were a little lacking um, in our score was uh, public input, so we're trying to get a couple of folks to come in and. And uh, give us uh, what what this project will look like and any input we get from the community, so please come out.
That's December ninth, what time?
December the ninth. It's a raise grant on the Popco Coe um, corridor, getting that uh, the improvements. Four lanes and sidewalks and retention, you know, stormwater ponds.
Frank Carlton?
Yeah, Frank Carlton, uh, December night at five thirty.
Okay.
Is that being hosted by us?
Yes.
Did we get anything?
It's not on my calendar.
Yeah, it's, I didn't, I'm looking to see reply. No, I didn't get anything on that. And I have, I replied to everything.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll make sure you get it today. I'm sorry, that should have, I mean, just, we just put it together.
Okay.
Um, either end of last week or first of this week, so it's not. But that's one of the things that we want to spell a check the box that will give us more points as to the, to getting that raise grant.
Okay.
Um, next up. Uh, the Surtoma Christmas Parade on Saturday, December fourteenth. Ten AM downtown Apopka, down, obviously down Park Avenue. Uh, I've got, I think, almost a hundred uh, parade uh. Um. Floats and, you know, groups, so come on out. It should be, starts at ten o'clock, uh, down Park Avenue. Uh, that same day, uh, at one PM at Edgewood Greenwood Cemetery. As well as the Bay Ridge Cemetery. We're gonna, we're gonna start out at uh, Edgewood. Uh, Sa- Saturday, December fourteenth at one PM. So go to the parade, go, go, go grab you a bite to eat, and then come back and meet us out at the Edgewood um. Cemetery for the Reefs Across America, uh, and we're gonna, we're gonna. Do a little tribute for um. Uh, Linda Lurindo and and all of her efforts to get us this, the Reefs Across America here. Uh, that same night, so December fourteenth at five PM, we've got the Silent Night, so that's the UCF Nights. Their orchestra and uh, choir. Gonna be at the amphitheater from five until seven, so should be a great evening of um, Christmas music. And then last, um, but not least, I've been having some conversations with the Orlando Regional Realtors Foundation, uh, Susan Placencia. Uh, about, um, you know, we, when we were doing the, the park off of um. Of the property. Where eight, we've got the four lots on Eighth Street along with the uh, the Pocket Park that we're, we're in the design phase now of. Anyway, what, what we were kind of looking at maybe is um, working with the, the foundation to, to build. Four affordable housing units there with their help, and uh, you know, maybe we. We look at donating the land uh, for affordable housing, but what, what kind of intrigued us, or I, I, I asked him about it, you know, we all. The normal bricks and mortar houses being built today, you know, with uh, are obviously uh, expensive and time-consuming. So what we're looking at doing is trying to find four builders that do the three D printing houses, so that we'd be able to come in instead of taking. You know, weeks or months to build, is be able to build these houses in, in a week or less, and so it's trying to find four builders that might. Be willing to, you know, to al- also have some skin in the game. So anyway, we're, we're taking a look at that. We, we're gonna probably have another meeting here uh, before the end of the year. So I just want to see if, if that's something you'd like us to, to, to move at least a little more discussion with the foundation. As to building um, some, some houses, affordable housing, and using the, the three D printing as a, as a platform, so. Is that something that would interest the, the council?
Uh, when you say foundation, the Orlando Realtors, what, what foundation, that foundation?
Yes.
And they're gonna be, what will be their role?
Uh, uh, they're gonna help fundraise for us? Yes.
Okay.
Which uh, which organization is that?
It's Orlando Realtors, their foundation.
I'm just not sure I've heard of them doing something like that before.
That was presented to us a few years ago, uh.
They're, they're, the foundation is, we've had, I've, I've had discussions over the years, we, they were talking about the, the big project.
But I do remember, yeah, I would have to go through my, my, but I do remember they a- actually gave me. Um, a pamphlet showing me three D, uh. Yeah, it was, it was a few, it was a few years ago. Um.
It wasn't Habitat for Humanity, it was Orem?
Um, I, I don't know if it came from Orem, but I remember. It was a, a group that came and um.
Was it, was it affiliate of Orem?
It, it's the foundation.
It's the found, okay, that's something I just, okay.
Yeah, I have to go through my paperwork, because I do remember getting something about three D when it was first coming out. And they were showing some homes.
So anyway, I just, just wanted to get, you know, a feel from the, the council, if that's something you want to move at least. Move a little farther into discussion. Obviously, because that property's in the CRA, we'd have to do surplus in the CRA and then come back to the council. And.
Well, they would, they would certainly have to kind of come and present what a three D house looks like. Um. When you're saying a discussion, to agree to a three D house?
No, just that, that we want to move forward and at least entertain this, this thought about having four. Builders, they do, it's tilt-up construction is another, another term for it. I mean, it's different. But where it's, it's not a, you know, pour the foundation, put up the wa- you know. Either block or frame walls and then put, you know, roof. This is where it's all kind of um, uh. Individual components that you pop in together and the way you, some, like some of the tilt construction on the, the industrial that we're, we're billing now, so.
Well, if we're gonna do, if it's gonna go to affordable housing, why not we, we just do whatever the process is for CRA and let whoever is gonna build the best product. Come in and build the best product, instead of limiting it to one or the other, just let it be whoever, whoever it is.
Yeah.
It, it simplifies the process, gets us out of the way, and lets them build it the most efficient way possible.
So, so what you, so I guess you're, so we're not, we don't want to.
Not saying I don't, I'm not saying one way or the other, just let's, let's surplus it, let's follow the direction of whatever is required from CRA. Do surplus the property and then present it to whoever will build affordable products there that we all uh, agree to. Let anybody bid on it. We're not spec- specifying one way or the other, and there, government tends to slow things down, so let's stay out of it and let them. Build something affordable and quick and, and get people some affordable housing.
All right, so we'll put that on the agenda for next council. Jacob, so you get, yeah. Surplus at the CRA. Next CRA meeting. Okay, and with that. We will uh, have public comment. Come on.